City Council meeting, a regular meeting for April 5th. We could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone. This time Jenny, if you take the role.
Councilmember Thorson.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Cole is absent. And Mayor Furlong.
Here. Coram is present. This time, a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'm moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson, seconded by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We do have one presentation, and it's a proclamation for Fair Housing Month. And we don't have anyone here from that, so I'll, I'll quick read the proclamation here. Whereas the Fair Housing Act enacted on April 11th, 1968, enshrined in the federal law the goal of eliminating racial segregation and ending housing discrimination in the United States. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities. And whereas North St. Paul is committed to the mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And whereas our social fabric, the economy, health, and environment are strengthened in diverse and inclusive communities. And whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, discrimination persists and many communities remain segregated. And whereas acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are repugnant to a common sense of decency and fairness. Now therefore, it be resolved that the City Council of North St. Paul, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Fair Housing Month in North St. Paul and commend its observation, observance to all citizens. And North St. Paul is an inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents of North St. Paul. Signed this 5th day of April 2022, myself, Terrence J. Furlong, the mayor. So I have that. Now we have the consent agenda, and if City Manager Stark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The consent agenda contains several separate items which are acted upon by the council in one motion. Once the consent agenda has been approved, the individual items have also been approved, and no further action is necessary. Any city council member may request an item be removed for further discussion. Tonight, we have a fairly long list of topics on the consent agenda. The minutes for the March 8th Special Joint Workshop meeting, the minutes for the March 15th City Council Workshop meeting, the minutes for the March 15th regular City Council meeting, and the minutes from the March 15th closed session of the City Council. Item E is general claims. Item F is HRA claims. Item G is EDA claims. Then we have a number of labor contracts. Item H is the contract with Public Works Employees Teamsters Local 320. Item I is with AFSMI essential employees. Item J is with AFSMI non-essential employees. Item K is patrol officers, local, the LELS. Item L is the supervisory unit through the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. Then item M is the COLA and wage adjustments for the non-union employees. Item N is a budget amendment to add a police officer and community development slash community services director to the complement of employees. And I would just add on that one, that that seems like a fairly big item to have on consent. The reason it is, is we had a pretty robust discussion at the March 15th workshop. Item O is the purchase of a 2024 Mack plow truck. Item P is the declaration of equipment surplus. Item Q is the 2022 sanitary sewer lining project, an approval of the plans and specifications, and authorized advertisement for bids. And item R is the temporary on-sale liquor license and charitable gambling application to the Church of St. Peter for their annual school gala event on May 7th. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
So at this time, if a council member would like to remove one of the items, they can do so at this time. If not, I would, City Attorney, so I would like to abstain from R, which is a temporary on-sale liquor license. Should I remove that, or can I just say I'm going to abstain, or?
No, I think if we want to move the slate of items A through R, if we could just note that items A through Q would pass 4-0 with a 3-0, and then one abstention on item R, I think that's fine. That's how I traditionally see a consent calendar.
Okay. So I will abstain from item R. I am on that board for, for the gala that night. So this time, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, and I abstain from R. I just want to say thank you to Soren and City Manager.
Do we need to make a motion?
We just needed a motion and then a second.
Oh, I didn't do, oh, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
No, no, we need a motion and then a sec.
Motion to accept it.
Motion to accept the consent agenda?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Right here.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Thorson. Sorry about that. I'm trying to think I had, so if there's no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. I want to say thank you to Soren and to City Manager in regards to all the contract work that went on. I don't know if anybody else was involved in that with the city. Jenny, I know, thank you also. It's a big deal to, to write a three-year contract and to have them all together, so.
We do have one outstanding contract that we'll hopefully bring back to the next regular meeting.
So I thank you almost all the way. We have one more. But, but do, I do, the council does appreciate it because it is a lot of hard work to get those together, but we do have one more left, so thank you. At this time, meeting open to the public. We've got one, John Schmal. Welcome, John. You know the routine.
Mayor, Council, yes, two quick ones. The agenda for this evening, I took a look at one and the consent agenda because it said truck. Truck sounded interesting. So I read it, and it says in one of the bullet points, "The vehicle is used year-round and also as an ice control salt truck, which causes rust and determination to wiring and many other mechanical parts." Probably should be deterioration to those parts, for what it's worth. Second item was, the MinDOT put out a message to all of us who sign up for notifications where there's going to be construction, and one of them happened to be the Highway 36 construction from here to Stillwater. And resources for businesses, Greater Stillwater Chamber of Commerce, St. Paul Chamber of Commerce, Y St. Paul, I haven't got an idea, Oakdale Chamber of Commerce, and Twin Cities North Chamber of Commerce, which has none of the cities that are on 36, except for Roseville, which isn't part of the project. So what is, what are the resources for North St. Paul businesses?
So that, that General Chamber of Commerce, all those ones, I think, ones up in White Bear?
Lane?
Yeah, it's not even part of this. I don't know what that, what that is, but.
I just didn't see our fair city.
No, we have, we have representation from our city. Not, not from the chamber, because we don't have a chamber in North St. Paul. But the, but the Business Association, you know, is part of the city.
But they didn't talk about us, anyway.
Yeah. Yep. Anybody on Zoom? Nobody on Zoom? We do have a public hearing. I'll turn it over to City Manager Stark.
Thank you, Mayor Furlong. And actually, I'm going to ask that City Engineer Dolly, we hadn't planned ahead on this, or sorry, Finance Director Winnick. I'm getting.
Who's passing the buck?
Okay. If you bear with me for a minute, I'm having some computer problems, so I've got to do this off my phone.
So we do have the proposal to adopt a street reconstruction plan and the intent to issue general obligation, street reconstruction bonds. Is that?
That is, that is correct.
Is that you?
Yes.
Okay. We'll turn over to Finance Director.
Mayor, Councilmembers, if you remember when we approved the budget in December 7th of 2021, we also adopted a revised Comprehensive Capital Improvement Plan. Incorporated within that plan was the street reconstruction in addition to equipment and everything else that needs to be replaced within the city over the next 10 years. Tonight, what this item is about is, according to statute, Minnesota Statute 475.58 subdivision 3B, we had to give public notice, and then within 10 to 28 days from that public notice, we need to hold a public hearing. This starts the, the clock. It gives 30 days from today on for citizens of the city of North St. Paul if they have an objection to us going out for a general obligation bond issuance. That if they got 5% of the registered voters, that this would end up having to go to, to a vote with all of the residents of the city. If after those 30 days it does not, then we're able to go out and, and issue a bond. If you can, if you remember, our engineer had presented what the plan is. What's attached here today is also a five-year plan incorporating what we're planning on doing for 2022 and going through 2026. We right now are, we've advertised and we have a maximum amount of the bond issuance at $12 million. That means that's the maximum amount that we could bond. We definitely could bond lower than, than that. And it'll identify the projects that are to be included in that bond issuance, some of which have already been awarded, bids awarded by the City Council. And there's been authorization to go out for bids. We were anticipating.
Is your mic on?
Supposed to be, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes. So we're anticipating that if everything goes forward, that we would be in receipt of the bond funds sometime in June of this year. And if you remember, incorporated in our budget for debt service, we had an amount that we had already levied for. So we're already ahead of where we're at. So I do have a debt schedule that was prepared by Baker Tilly that would be able to be within that dollar amount. It is not my anticipation. It'll, it'll, it'll really depend on when bids come in. It is not my intention to go for the full $12 million. I think we can be somewhere about $10 and 1/2 million for a bond issuance, and we will not end up having to increase the debt service for the city. In other words, putting another burden in, on the taxpayers in the, in 2020, in pay 2023. So that's kind of where we're, we're shooting at, and we're kind of looking at. Again, so much depends on when these bids come in. I'll be setting up a meeting with our engineer to make sure that my comfort level and that we've, we've incorporated all of the costs, that we've got our soft costs included in there, and we've got contingencies to make sure that the bond issuance will be enough to be able to, to complete these, these, this work. So if there's any questions from the public, definitely would, would like to hear that and any concerns.
And I'm assuming costs are off the charts right now? Sorry, Morgan, I just, it, it, you know, to me, this time in our history is like, everything's so inflated right now, and, you know, do we, I think sometimes you've got to look at, possibly too, holding off a project until inflation comes down, or, but I don't, I don't think we're going to do that, but.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So to answer the original question, we are seeing cost increases in some areas in the construction market. You know, and the construction market that we operate in is, you know, public utilities, streets, which might be a little different than the vertical market, or, you know, quick trips and, and housing development, that sort of thing. Right now, you know, the bids that we've received in North St. Paul have been favorable. I'll, I'll be presenting, you know, on a, a project a little bit later here, and the bids have been coming in good so far for us. In other areas, we've seen increases around 10%. It's still early in the bidding season. I, I think that, you know, we expect that as time goes on, some of the prices will, will go up later. Me and my, my staff have been trying to be strategic in terms of providing flexibilities for contractors where we can with respect to finishing projects so that they don't build the risk of not finishing on time into their bid and, and I guess you could call that artificially inflating the price of the project if the city's okay with that kind of flexibility, right? But I think, Mr. Mayor, you bring up a good point. Certainly, the city always has the opportunity with continued review of the financial viability of any program, meaning a group of projects as a program. The city has the opportunity to not award a contract, for example, if, if bids come in too high or higher than a comfort level for an existing fundable construction program or, which could be, you know, delay, delay a project for a year or a couple of years or something. Certainly, this is a progressive effort that has been packaged together since last year, you know, approved by council in terms of a, a group of projects. And so we're hopeful that we can continue with that. Dan and I are in, in close contact as the bids come in. Some of this amount has been put together and packaged as an estimate, as opposed to knowing exactly what the construction contract amount is. So there are some unknowns out there. But as we move forward through the process, staff will have to be advising council, and council does have the opportunity or the option, I guess, for future consideration on projects to not award or delay and, and not enter into a construction contract. Once you've entered into a construction contract, that's a different situation. It's difficult to, more difficult to pause or stop.
Right.
An effort at that point, but for some of these projects that are included in the program, we haven't gotten there yet, so there is some opportunity for that moving forward if things change or if, you know, prices increase substantially. I mean, the other thing we're seeing too, that doesn't always affect prices, is the availability of materials. Right now in North St. Paul, we are, we're, we've moved more towards plastic water main pipe, but as an example, ductile iron water main pipe is on a 28-week delay just for delivery, and contractors are actually kind of hoarding part, pipe themselves, which is even further exacerbating the issue for supply of, of certain materials. So those kinds of things, you know, you can't foresee they might continue to crop up unexpectedly as the season goes on. We'll just have to adjust as intelligently and as economically smartly as we can moving forward to, for the greatest benefit of the city.
Any other questions for Morgan or Dan? If not, I'll open the public hearing portion. Open it up at 7:10. 6:50, oh, 7:10. No, it says 7:10. 6:50, 6:50. Wow, wow. Is this one, is this one of those nights? Geez. That is funny. Okay. So open it up, actually, I'll use my computer time here. It's 6:50. So open the public hearing at this time. And I suppose we don't have anybody. Bob, if you want to come up and talk about the street bonding? No, you're okay? All right. We have nobody on Zoom, I take it, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Sounds good. Sounds good. And I'm just looking, is there a resolution or anything, or is that? There is a resolution. Okay. I've got the resolution, or the motion is for a resolution adopting a street reconstruction plan and approving the issuance of general obligation, street reconstruction bonds. Is there a motion? Moved by Councilmember Peterson?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. City Manager Stark?
Thank you, Mayor Furlong. The next item is an ordinance revision related to wood boilers and other exterior heating devices. So we had a recent inquiry as to whether the city of North St. Paul allows auxiliary, auxiliary wood boilers. And just to clarify, the inquiry was not from a resident. I believe it was from a organization that sells these devices, trying to determine which cities do or don't allow them. These devices are external to a structure but provide heat supplied by wood or pellets or other flammable through combustion, and they supply heat to the structure either through ductwork or more commonly through hot water piping. Upon review of the city ordinances, it was determined that the city code is silent on this issue. I inquired with the city attorney whether the other cities he serves allow such devices. His response was that they do not allow such devices, and he, I think, suggested that it might be good for us to not as well. He had some experiences, I believe, with Stillwater Township that maybe I'll let him speak to. The reason that we're recommending against them is that the smoke created by the devices and the need for outdoor storage of wood or other combustible materials are inconsistent with a community with housing density as high as North St. Paul's, and that such devices are more appropriate for homes sitting on larger properties than exist here. And so the attached ordinance was prepared by City Attorney Matic. I will say that we did not do a great deal of our own, you know, primary research on this about, you know, how far the smoke carries or any of those kinds of things. We really relied on what, what other cities that are similar to, to us have done.
Because we, I don't think we have any wood boilers.
We don't know of any. It's possible there are some out there that, you know, didn't seek permits or any approvals, but to, to our knowledge, we don't.
If, if there are some out there and we adopt this, what happens? I suppose that goes.
Grandfathered in.
They're grandfathered in.
That's.
That's it.
That's what I have to, to say.
City Attorney, do you have anything to add to that?
I think John covered it, you know, candidly about, I, I feel like some of these items come up, and then I'll sit through them on various council items, and this, I think, came up about 10 years ago while, when the product started getting marketed. It, you know, it's not a anti-wood burning measure. What it is, is it's candidly what, what these communities started to experience was, the intensity with which that wood was burned was a lot greater than, say, like a fireplace or an occasional bonfire. And so what you saw was, as the primary source of heat, the, the stacks aren't as tall as a chimney, so it doesn't get kicked up, and the smoke tended to just kind of collect in the neighborhood. And then candidly, it depends upon, you know, the right wood being burned. Anytime you put in wet wood or other things that, that occasionally do creep in there, it creates more smoke too. So it isn't a, hey, we're against burning wood, just the intensity with which these are constantly burning during a Minnesota winter and the smoke. People with, there were complaints with people who had, you know, who were healthy, but even those who, say, had asthma or some respiratory issues, these became a problem. So I know a lot of communities, when you're in close, like John was talking about, like in North St. Paul with your lot sizes, did ban them. What I can tell you is, at that same time, a community John mentioned, it's Stillwater Township, that has larger lots, five and 10 acres, said, you know, we think this is exactly what we do want, people to be able to have, and we have the acreage. And I think it took about one year worth of burning, and even at that lot size, they reexamined that decision, and they ultimately did ban them because of the, the smoke and other kind of collateral or incident problems they had with the burning of them. So when John came up, I haven't studied the issue. I can tell you what I've experienced just in representing communities and kind of dealing with these outdoor wood boilers and the smoke. Again, it's a lot different than, say, a fireplace or just even some internal furnaces that burn. You know, we started looking at, you know, regular firewood and fuel oil and things like that. It's, it's a lot more intense and just a lot more smoky, so that, that's why it's there. This was not, I worked on it. I gave John the language. This was, in my opinion, a policy decision. It wasn't a, hey, to be legally compliant, you need to do this. So I do think this is something for you to consider, and the, the reasons I'm giving right now are kind of anecdotally what other communities have looked at and thought about in their rationale. So with that, I'd stand for any questions.
The only experience I had was, was a few years ago in regards to Stillwater. And again, it was, I think, a 10-acre spot, and people had a swimming pool in their neighborhood. A wood boiler or whatever, and their swimming pool would be soot, be a film on, on there, and they complained a lot about it, so. But I know that the boilers now are different than they were five years ago, so. Any questions for City Ma, or City Manager or City Attorney? Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, I just, so those are some of the questions that I had when I was reading this. You know, what, what was driving it? How many people have these or businesses or residents? It sounds like we don't know. The fact that it was a business inquiring would lead me to believe that maybe they were asked to potentially install one, and I'd be curious to hear what their take on it is, because I'm just, I'm not a fan of banning things. And from my understanding, the way our code is written, if someone were to want to build this, there's certain setback requirements. And given the fact that a lot of our lots are smaller in size, it would just disqualify itself from that aspect. So I don't really, I mean, I don't really see the, the reason to have to add it to the nuisance list and, and not allow it. But to be honest with you, I don't, don't know much about them, and. But to be honest with you, I don't, don't know much about them, and, you know, before I vote to ban something, I like to have some time to do some more research and get some more feedback. So I mean, I would propose that we table this and for additional time to look into it.
So motion would be to table this item at this time and bring it back for further discussion. I just want to make a clarification. So the business, I believe, was a, if, City Manager, if you can explain what business actually inquired, I think it was a company that actually makes them, to see if they're allowed in our city. So it wasn't a, a business in our city that was.
Yeah, I, so I did not speak with the, the caller, but that's my understanding. It was a, it was a retailer that sells these, not a, not a manufacturer of the furnaces, but a retailer. It was somebody that is not located in North St. Paul. The way it was relayed to me is that they were checking around various communities just to find out where they were and were not allowed. I, you know, ostensibly so that if a customer called and said, hey, I'd like to install one of these, and they would just say, well, what city do you live in? Well, I'm in Stillwater Township. Nope, they don't allow them. I, I think that's, that was the rationale, that they just wanted to be able to save people some time if, by knowing where they lived and whether they were permitted or not.
So we do have a motion for the table. We would need a second for that?
That's correct.
Is there a second for the table?
I'll second it.
There's a second for the table. Any other discussion? If not, all who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? So we'll table this until, we'll just bring up the next, next meeting. Give us time to do a little research.
Sure. And if, if council members want to individually email me with some of the information, that would be helpful in making a decision, that'd be good. Just don't email one another.
I'll turn it over to City Manager Stark.
Thank you. The next item is the Anchor Block Commons final BMPs to accept quotes and award construction contracts. And I would ask the city engineer, I know in my profession what BMPs means. I suspect it means the same in yours, but if you could elaborate on the, on the acronym.
Sure, my bad. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so I'll start with that, explaining BMPs. I should know, if there's going to be an acronym, I should probably spell it out at least once in the document.
That was a question I had, too.
Yeah. I should know this, to not get myself into this situation. BMP is certainly a technical jargon, if you will, very common practice, which is why I missed spelling it out for you folks, so apologies on that. But it means best management practices, and in this instance, it means water quality treatment device. The item before you here tonight is the consideration of quotes received and potential award of a construction contract for improvements to stormwater, if you want to call them retention basins. They're, they're basically filtration basins that were constructed on the Anchor Block site on the north side of Anchor Drive. So there are three basins that are stormwater collection devices that treat the hardcover stormwater runoff that comes out of the, the roadway on Anchor Drive, jointly all of the hardcover parking lots in the development area there, and then treats them before discharging clean water into the MinDOT ponds north of the site and eventually on downstream through our storm sewer system. This is a requirement of the Watershed District's approvals on the development and approval on the hardcover contemplated with the, with the sites, with QuickTrip, self-storage, and with the apartments that are still under construction. I also should note for the council that the, this particular city effort, this city project finishes up the ponds which were started on the north side of Anchor Drive. There is a fourth pond that's on the south side of Anchor Drive, which for site flexibility reasons is being constructed by the developer or by the contractor that's building the apartments.
Is that behind the building or?
It's actually right between the road and the garage. The line of garages there, so it's a fairly skinny pond there. But that, that area is all going to work together. Eventually, when they're done constructing it, the city will own and operate and maintain that pond, just like it will the other three that we're talking about here tonight. But for this particular award of contract, we're just working on the north side again. They chose to take that on themselves, but essentially, they're all identical in terms of design, function, purpose. They'll all work together, and ultimately, they will all be the responsibility of the city to, to maintain moving forward, as Public Works knows. So the, the reason why we're doing this kind of after the fact is if we had installed all of this filtration stuff in the bottom of the ponds while those sites were all being constructed, we would have had some runoff during rain events that would have actually silted in the bottom of the pond and plugged it up, and that would have cost a lot of money to actually dig that up and replace it and do it over again. So the engineering world has learned that it's very smart to delay this portion of the thing until after all of the sites are done, you know, parking lots are done, the sod is in, there's no further risk of erosion or sedimentation. So this is the last thing that has to happen with these ponds before they're turned over to perpetual maintenance, and we satisfy the terms of the Watershed District permit for the site. The bids, or the, I'm sorry, quotes were very good and competitive. We had 10 quotes from different contractors doing the work and came in slightly underbid, I think about $15,000 under what we were estimating for a final estimate for the project. And so the low quote is Winberg Companies, which I'm presenting and recommending here for award of contract to the city council in the amount of $113,890.25. Winberg has not done work in the city of North St. Paul before, but I did check into them last year, as recently as last year, and working with WSB, they completed a similar project for a series of ponds within the city of, I think it was Brooklyn Center, not Brooklyn Park, but they did a really good job. They finished on time, under budget, so I can recommend them, even though they're a new contractor within the city. With that, I'll stand for any questions the council might have.
So you always vet the business?
If I haven't heard of them before, certainly.
Never worked with them or?
References, or I'll ask around WSB. Sometimes we actually request written references from other cities that may have worked with a contractor. It's not rare, but it's not very often that I come across a contractor I've never heard of before. But new, new contractors are formed and, you know, spin off of other contractors, right? So, but it's always good to check to make sure that someone has worked with them before and had a favorable experience versus a, a negative one. And in this instance, it was a, it was a very successful project.
Good. Any questions for Morgan? Councilmember Thorson.
Yeah, they're just kind of general questions since we're on the topic. So down there, you know, there's still construction going on with the apartment building at MNI Homes, and there's a lot of silt fencing and then those socks. But on the portions that are on the, the other side of Anchor Drive, so where QuickTrip is and extra space storage, I mean, that's pretty much done. But those silt fencing and the socks have kind of gotten pushed up from the plows and stuff. They're still sitting there. When, are they, are those going to get picked up and cleaned up, like after this project is done? Or?
Yes, Councilmember Thorson, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that would be an ideal opportune time for, if it could be pulled, for our contractor to do that. Some of those devices might be the responsibility of QuickTrip or whatever. We could take a look at it in a, you know, I guess, last-case scenario. Public Works might be able to pick some of them up. But technically, we can't remove them until all of the work is done and we've got sufficient vegetation growth kind of going on and around the area. So right now, some of what's in there in place will actually come in handy for this work, because it will still need to be protected. But anything that we can pull, we can certainly take a look at, and either in coordination with those folks that are responsible for maintenance on that, the private sites right now, or with Public Works, we can get that cleaned up at the appropriate time. I would imagine that either by the end of this season, or if we've, we need a little bit more growth, certainly in 2023 would be the last that we need any of that, and we'd be pulling that out of there as best we could.
Yeah, that was just my question, like, whose responsibility is it? Is it the cities? Is it the contractors? Is it the landowners? And then another question, I, just an observation that I noticed, I think it was two years ago now, basically when that MNI site started, we had a pretty heavy rainfall, I think it was in 4th of July weekend or before that or right after, and there was a massive failure in the silt fence, and you could see all that clay water very clearly running down the curb line, because before it was just rainwater, and then you, you could see where all this runoff was coming down, meeting that, and it was just that clayish brown color going straight into the city sewer. And I snapped a couple of pictures at the time, sent it to the city manager, and he was, he contacted some contractor that went up there and fixed it. Now, I don't, I didn't follow up and go back, but forever how long that ran, it filled in, and I don't know what that does to, you know, I know when clay gets super wet, I've had an experience flooding in my own house where it comes in and then it dries, and then you got this thick base litter of clay in your home, and I'd imagine that if it dries, it stays in our city pipes, or it all runs into those holding ponds and just sediment builds up. And that's what this project is designed to do, to remove that type of sediment?
Yes, sediment and also nutrients like phosphorus or other things that might be coming in from fertilizers. I mean, those are some of the biggest pollutants that we see in our water bodies, whether it's wetlands or streams or, or lakes or whatever. So yes, when we, when I say water quality, I mean that the water exiting these devices are going to have less phosphorus, less nutrients, and less solids. I would consider kind of those suspended clay particles that make it look like chocolate milk. That's, those are solids technically, even though they're very small. So that's exactly the types of things that these devices are going to do, and we have a series of them all through the city. All cities do, even down to, you know, residential rain gardens that we have kind of our voluntary rain garden program for individual residential folks that they can be a part of. Those all, all do similar things and provide similar benefits for stormwater runoff.
And so in a project like that, I mean, it's kind of a larger area, but it's contained to, you know, you can kind of grid it out, I suppose, too, with our infrastructure. Is there some process, like before that project took place, did, did Public Works or the contractor hire a subcontractor? Were they going and kind of inspect the city lines and stuff, and then after, they go in and look and see, like, well, you know, we, it's finding good to require you to put a silt fence in, but if it fails? And then how do you measure that to say, okay, well, here's our inspection record before the project started? Here's it after. Look at all this filtrate, you know, whatever the terminology is, all this sediment that came in here. Clearly, you could tie it to, or, I mean, it seems like it would make sense to say, yes, your project.
A response.
Your silt fence was not sufficient, and it's not cheap to go in and, and clear those lines, and clearly, it was done because of that work. So is there, I mean, I'm just imagining this in my head, how it works, but maybe that's not how it works at all. Is there, so my, I guess my question or concern is, how do we ensure that a project, like what's gone on, doesn't have negative impacts into our infrastructure like that?
Sure. So actually, the point you bring up is, is a good one, and you don't want me to talk all night about this. There's certainly a lot of detail here, but what I can tell you is that it's actually very highly regulated at the, in the projects that we, the city, do and the projects that private individuals do, like, let's say, QuickTrip or any one developing within the city. And sometimes, depending on how big of an area that you are impacting, it could be a residential project or a residential area. But there are permits and requirements that are set up at the state level, at the local level. Our city ordinance controls some of these things, and also at the Watershed District level. So there's rules and laws that need to be followed there. So with respect to, you know, where and how much silt fence or other type of protective BMPs, if I can use that technical term again, are required on any particular site, that's required, and the people that design those have to be certified, the people that inspect those have to be certified. You know, we have to have, the contractors that work on city projects have to have people on their staff that are trained and certified to be able to inspect and install and correct and repair and that sort of thing. And it's all documented, again, within the permitting process. So for that particular instance that you're talking about at MNI Homes, and that's a privately constructed effort, so that contractor that's working for that developer was responsible for that activity and held that permit, and they did have a discharge during a heavy rain event, and the Watershed District was aware of it. City was made aware of it. I was made aware of it, and they took corrective measures to address that under the terms of the watershed rules and the expectations of the permit that they were holding with the Watershed District. So, you know, and a weather event or a rain event is sometimes, sometimes can exceed those protections that might be on a construction project. When that happens, that doesn't always mean that there needs to be activity downstream to start digging into a, you know, a wetland or a pond or something like that. That's, sometimes that creates more problems than good, actually. But certainly, the, the effort immediately when that sort of thing happens is to address the problem. If a silt fence has broken, repair that, get things back into compliance. And in that instance and several others, that, you know, whether it's a city project or a private project, everybody's collaborating, working together, trying to, you know, make sure that we don't have any issues downstream, because it is an environmental concern, and again, it is regulated at several different levels.
Okay. Well, it's good to hear that, because, you know, again, I'm just a late in person, happy to be driving by, saw it, and then after, I started to think, because, you know, being on the council, we see all this stuff and the watershed districts and all these permits and things, and then you think, well, we go through all that, and then this happens. I mean, it's obviously not good, and then I just was, you know, you forget about it and move on, but now that we're talking about it again, it kind of, that spurred me to ask about that. But I'm glad to hear that there's, you know, there's some sort of procedures in place to where, when something fails, those who are responsible for are held accountable, and it's not just a feel-good exercise and.
Oh, no.
And signing paperwork and stamping stuff and then jamming stakes in the ground and then that's it. But, I mean, driving by that too recently, that, I thought about that, too. It's like, well, what are these silt fences? Do they just stay there and, and eventually the?
Forgotten about. I mean, it's a good point, because they, the, things tend to grow up around them, and they're tough to get to, and so it does take some intentional effort to make sure that you get them out of there, and sometimes we're finding them in weird corners and realizing that, you know, Public Works or, you know, we need to get somebody out there. Sometimes it's a warranty item, so all of our public projects typically have a two-year warranty. If we find something that was left over, we can make the contractor pull that out as a warranty item, you know, at no cost to the city. So it's just something to stay on top of. It's a good point.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Morgan? If not, the motion is for a resolution accepting quotes and awarding a construction contract for the Anchor Block Commons final BMPs. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thorson. Any discussion? If not, all who are in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Thank you, Morgan. Appreciate it. City Manager Stark.
Thank you, Mayor Furlong. I wanted to give council members an update on the Lilly Building property, how that's kind of evolved. So if you remember, we had a joint workshop on March 8th, a workshop of the council and the chair and vice chairs of the EDA and Planning Commission. A couple of development teams made proposals for how they would like to redevelop the Lilly property. One was a gentleman named John Picha, and the other was a team of Jim Lovell and Basir Tareem. The group, the council and the others, asked some really good questions. One of the questions was whether the developers would be willing to purchase the property directly themselves. At that point in time, the EDA had contemplated perhaps buying the property and then turning around later and selling it to a developer. around later and selling it to a developer. So both developers indicated that they would be willing and able, and actually, I think, preferred to be the direct buyer rather than have the EDA be an intermediary. And at that meeting, I shared that, you know, one of the next steps, in my opinion, would be for the EDA to select a developer to work with. At some point in time, you've just got to, you know, pick a horse, as they say, and move forward. So at the March 23rd EDA meeting, the commissioners did select the team of Jim Lovell and Basir Tareem. What they had shown here, I believe, was a, I'm trying to remember, because I've seen a couple of iterations of the plan. I believe it was a five-story building, and they have indicated a willingness to cut it back to perhaps four stories. So that's one change that I'm aware of. But as I said, the EDA did select that team for a number of reasons. I think the scope of the project and the tax revenues that it would generate was a big issue. Another big issue was, there's more apartment units, which means more residents in our downtown area to, you know, to add some vitality to our downtown. So the next steps, then, working with Mr. Lovell and Mr. Tareem, they are in negotiations with the Lilly family to purchase the property directly. As of this afternoon, both parties hadn't signed the purchase agreement. My understanding is that they're close and that they anticipate that would happen probably this week. And then the EDA would likely enter into a preliminary development agreement with the development team, where really, the purpose of that is, the EDA says, we're not going to work with other developers. It's kind of exclusive rights. And the developer, and that the EDA would use our legal counsel to work on future issues related to this. We'd also use our financial analysts to help us with looking at TIF. And the developers did indicate that they thought TIF was likely to be needed, so we would analyze that. They in turn would agree to reimburse us for those costs. So it kind of just lays out some of the roles and responsibilities. And I would anticipate that would go back to the EDA. Maybe not next week. The EDA meeting is next Wednesday. We may not be ready for that then, but certainly soon. So like I said, I just wanted to update you on that. And if folks have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for City Manager? Any other updates?
Yeah, just a quick one. The, so in 2017, the city council approved an employee policy manual. And that includes the ability for employees to have flexible scheduling with some kind of rules around that. And it also includes the ability for employees to do remote work. And so as a staff, we are looking to implement some of those policies where possible. You know, if differing employee groups have a differing ability to do this, you know, emergency personnel, you know, have a different need and maybe can't participate in these in the same way. The reason I'm telling you this is, it might come back to you, because it's in the employee manual as it is, it wouldn't need to come back to you, except for the fact that some of our collective bargaining contracts, some of the provisions are a little different than what those agreements would say. And so we may need to come back with a memorandum of understanding with the labor unions, saying, basically, it would say, we, the labor union, agree that this is a benefit to us. Our members don't have to participate if they choose to participate. And there's some contradictory language with our agreement that either our member would choose not to participate or would forego challenging that. So I just want to make you aware, in case when that comes back, you'll be, have an understanding of why we're doing that. That's all I've got.
Good. Any other questions for City Manager? If not, reports of council and commissions, committees, Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, I don't have anything new, except the Planning Commission is going to meet this Thursday here in the chambers at 6:30. The Arts and Culture Commission is also meeting tomorrow in Sandberg. And I believe both commissions are still seeking applicants.
I think they closed.
They're closed now. Okay. They're closed now. Okay. And then, as for the redevelopment master plan, I was absent, so I'll defer to Councilmember Thorson.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, the North St. Paul Business Association luncheon is next Tuesday, April 12th, at noon at the Legion. And the speaker is our WSB engineer, Morgan Dwelly. Correct? That's not right? Is that wrong? I'm sorry.
No, I'm sure it is right.
Oh, you're going to talk, you're going to tell you what you're going to talk about? The Anchor View development and the parking lot behind.
I'm just kidding, Morgan.
I thought it was an April Fool's joke. I guess not. Well, it should be interesting. The 19th Avenue student-built house, it's got windows. They started a sheetrock today. Installation is in, and it's actually looking like a nice house. So it's all getting buttoned down. Those poor kids got bad weather, though. They're there every day. I got to give them credit. Rain, snow, sleet, but it's happening. My Minnesota Women's City Government presents on the 22nd, Managing Life and Public Service. And that's going to be at 11 o'clock. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Yeah, that house over on 19th is looking really nice. We did get a little tour the other day, and it was, they're working hard on that. Councilmember Thorson.
Yeah, the redevelopment master plan group met last Monday. We're continuing with updating and making revisions to that. It's getting pretty close to being done, to where it will go in front of the Planning Commission for review and comment, the EDA for review and comment. And then we discussed the implementation rollout, where we're going to have kind of an open house. I know I proposed possibly, if there's a day or a meeting where there's kind of a light workshop, or maybe not the need of a workshop, that that open house could take place. A workshop, since we're already all going to be here for a meeting, and staff will be here anyway. So we're looking at that. And then working at communicating with, having a business association presentation, getting feedback from those individuals, and then kind of having a final plan that the council will eventually adopt, and then rolling it out on our website in various ways. So that's where we're at with that.
Good. General Business, Councilmember Wong.
The food shelf is working with FEN and the University of Minnesota Extension to renovate and move into a new space. And so I think it's coming along, and they have three iterations of layouts. And I think they finally are looking to propose one to the board. So we should have something soon, and they're moving pretty quickly, all things considered. So I hope that they'll probably move in in the next couple months.
I had heard April 18th is kind of a soft move, but might be sooner than a couple months. I don't know. We'll see.
We'll see.
We'll see. So, yeah. Okay. General Business, Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, I just want to remind the general public that the cleanup day is April 30th. We had a discussion at the workshop. And that again is 8:00 to 11:00, is that right, Carrie? And that'll be down at Public Works, and they've got to have it really slick and, so get all your stuff together. And then the garage sale will be May 5th through the 7th. And you can get a sign and your address posted for $10. So you can come down to City Hall and see somebody there. And I want to just wish everybody Happy Easter. Thank you.
Do we have a lot of people signed up for the garage sale?
Seven.
Seven, okay. Councilmember Thorson.
Just a couple of quick observations along the lines of cleaning things up. That little frontage road, is it Charles that takes you into Burger King? There seems to be an excessive amount of trash and garbage. I know we're kind of tail end of winter here, and maybe they just haven't had a chance to see that since the snow's melted, but it looks pretty bad. And, you know, I think code enforcement, if they haven't already, needs to go over there and look at that.
Is it Burger King?
Well, I think it's, I don't know what the deal is with that little stretch, if that's a private road or a city road. It's usually in pretty rough shape. But it's that stretch of road, and then on either sides, it's private property. And I don't think it's Burger King's, but there's tires and just garbage all over it. And I noticed it because I ran to Burger King quick for lunch, and I thought, oh my God, you know, I need to start taking pictures of this. But just mentioning, I think it's still all there and probably getting worse, but just worth noting, I mean, we got to send a letter or something. And then, you know, we've been talking about murals and the Arts Council, and I noticed, I think it's, I don't know if the Berwolds own that building, or if it's, is it custom millwork, but that large wall along Knight-Next Street of Public Works, there's quite a bit of graffiti on there, and I know they've had issues with that over time. But if there's ever a candidate to work with the city, and if it, I'm assuming that it's privately owned, I don't know what entity. Berwolds, okay. I mean, that seems like a perfect canvas for a large mural that's highly visible from the highway, from the frontage road. And I'm sure they're sick of repainting that stuff, not to say it's going to stop, but maybe if there's a nice mural there.
I think that's one of the candidates.
Yeah, okay. So just wanted to bring that up as another area of kind of, it's getting a little out of hand. So that's all I have.
Good. And I have, invite the council this Friday at 3:00 at the, we have a ribbon cutting. I think you all might have got an invite. It's the, the business is our kids' walk-in child care. And it's at 2470 McKnight. And that's at Friday at 3:00. We'll have a little red ribbon cutting. Also, the business association's been invited, and also the EDA's been invited. I would like to thank the Rotary and Business Association and Norma Worms Little Elves helping, they moved the toy shelf this last Saturday. They moved it over to the new spot where the food shelf is going to be. So Norma's very happy at this time. She's now in her new spot, and I think it's going to take her about a month to get it all situated. There was a lot of stuff in that little building over there, a lot of toys. I was amazed. And this last week was Career Day at North High. I want to thank the Public Works, the electric, fire, and police being at North High for Career Day at North High. And with that, I don't have anything else. I'd like to wish everyone else a blessed Easter also. And if anybody has anything else before I close the meeting. If you forgot anything, otherwise, the meeting ends at 7:00. If there's nothing else, a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? Not all is. Opposed, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.